We're reconvening the meeting of the Wednesday, October 18th, school board meeting. We were in executive session for some personnel matters and tenure issue and special ed issue. And we returned, and the reason I am speaking here is because Christine Beck has laryngitis and can't speak, so, but she could still come to the meeting, so I know it seems kind of strange, but, so, I am doing that for her. So, welcome everyone, and would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to, we would like to thank Slingleens School, Heidi Bonakis' staff for allowing us to have the meeting here. As you know, we've gone around the district each year now, for the last couple of years, visiting each elementary school and middle school, and it's been really a great experience doing that, so, thank you for having us here tonight. Are there any participation in government students? Okay. Well, the rules are that you need to stay until 9:00 a.m. or-
Not at 9:00 p.m.
Or not, yeah, okay.
Over.
Never quite had that long of a meeting. To 9:00 p.m. or to the end of the meeting, whichever occurs first. And I think you'll be happy probably tonight. Just out of curiosity, are there any, are any of you alums of Slingleens School? Okay. You happy to be back here?
[laughing]
Well, an extra welcome to you. Okay, introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Michael Cooper.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Jody Monroe.
Christine Beck.
Lynn Lenhart.
Meredith Moriarty.
Charmaine Wijssinger.
And Judy Keel.
Okay. First, I vote business. Are the minutes from the October 4th meeting, and I have a motion to accept the minutes? So move.
Second.
Are there any corrections, additions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is there a member of the student senate here tonight? All right, I guess we don't have the student senate report. So we're in tenants' report. Jody?
Sure, thank you. I did want to let people know that our student help desk was featured in the EdTech magazine. I actually intended to bring it tonight. There's a picture of a couple of our students in there, and I got a signed copy today, so I wanted to do a little photo op, but I know Ray is here, and he was involved in that process, but it's a really great article, and our communications is going to be putting something out the next day or two highlighting some of that work, so it was a great article. Also, we had our first, we had our community forum last week, and there were, I know a lot of you were on. Mike was there, and Holly was there. We had a pretty good turnout. We had a lot of BOSI staff helping to facilitate, and we got some, I thought, very good discussion, really good feedback. So, the next step is, we have a committee meeting in a couple of weeks, and we'll be sharing all of the feedback from each of those groups. I think there were seven or eight groups in total. And then, from there, the intent is to take some of that information and do a more widespread survey for some stakeholders. And I'm also doing a student forum in a couple of weeks to get some more student input on some of that, and we'll go forward from there. But I thought there were some really great discussions that happened. There were probably six or eight people in each of the groups, so, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting, because I think there were, there were different ideas that came out of each group, but at the same time, there were also some commonalities. So I think as you put the information together, I think it'll be helpful.
Yeah, I thought all of the groups were very energetic and had a lot of ideas, but I agree that there were a lot of different ideas, but there were some common themes that came out from all the groups.
Yep. And finally, I just wanted to announce that we did have our Hall of Fame induction this past weekend. We had five inductees that happened during homecoming weekend. We had the Honorable Judge Stephen Herrick and Dr. Robert Spence from the class of 1965, Kate Breslin from the class of 1983, Owen Smith from the class of 2000, and Katie Rowan from the class of 2005. It was a really diverse group of individuals, and what was nice to hear is they all were so complimentary of their foundations in the district and what Bethlehem had provided to them, and talked about different people along the way who helped, and Christine was at that, so, it was a great event. I can't really talk. It was a nice event. It was a nice event, and they were very appreciative of their experience here, and the teaching staff, and several, thank teachers that came out to acknowledge them, so it was nice. It was nice.
Yeah, I'll just say that my husband and Steve Herrick were friends. They were, they went to Slingleens, just so you know, and used to fool around and get in trouble and whatever when they were in first and second grade, just, deep rooms. And the school was a lot smaller then. When they came, it was only the front of the school, okay? While they were here, then the addition to the street was put on, and that was like that, probably, well, when my kids were here, actually. It was that small. A lot has changed.
Yeah. That's my report. Thanks.
Okay. Board of Education report.
I attended the farmer's market this weekend where the middle school had set up, and they were selling their vegetables that they grew. And I have to tell you, they grow great lettuce and great carrots, because I bought quite a bit from them, and it was wonderful, and it was nice to see them there. And Mark Warford was there, sort of supervising, but as he said, "The kids are so great, I don't have anything to do. I can stand here and talk." And the kids really were very independent, and it was a wonderful thing to see.
I enjoyed attending the convention at the end of this past week, and I'm sure you guys are, will add your thoughts on that. There were a number of really informative sessions that I attended, but I particularly wanted to mention that I had a lot of fun at the art show. We got to see a number of the Bethlehem students' artwork that was on display, and they had a nice reception. It was, it was good.
Yeah, it was very convenient. It was right outside the Jack Shay Arena where the commissioner was about to speak, you know, when Melanie Painter was there with the students and their parents. So I thought that timing was actually very good.
Yeah, I think Mrs. Painter took some pictures, too. They may be up on the website, that the students were able to pose with sort of several of the board members, and it was quite nice, so.
I attended the convention as well. One session I went to was very informative about some changes that were made to a school to allow more physically active time for children, more recess, and more active play for young children. What I found interesting about that was that those changes were made as part of the school's strategic planning committee was the one who brought that up, and they brought that up through their, through a new five-year plan. So I just thought that was a very good example about how policies can be made through these strategic committee planning boards and through five-year plans. Along that lines, I have had several people from the community tell me that they were interested in coming to the strategic planning committee but could not make the last meeting. They didn't know if it had been closed at this point, or if they can still become involved with it, or if they're not able to come to meetings in the evening for any particular reason, if they could just perhaps write a letter or an email to someone letting them know what their vision for the school district is.
So I think doing the survey might address those concerns, because we'll be following up on similar questions that we asked at the forum based on some of the, and then some additional questions based on the feedback we got at the forum. So there will still be an opportunity for them to participate.
Okay. Can they come to the next meeting, or has that been kind of closed off?
Well, the next meeting is just for the committee.
Oh, okay.
So, they're, one of the things we talked about at the committee was that we had this one scheduled community forum. It's possible that later in the process, we might have another forum.
Okay.
I'm not sure. It's kind of up to the group, I guess.
Okay.
But certainly, there will be a survey that they can participate in, that I think will, that can share their feedback.
I also attended the convention. What that is, is a statewide convention for school board members. So there are hundreds of people who attend from all different school boards around the country. We receive training on different legal aspects, wellness politics, et cetera, so we get to choose the sessions we attend. I know, I'm going to speak for Christine. She and I both attended the pre-law conference, which was a day-long session on specific legal issues that are, we need to be attuned to in legal changes. In particular, some of the focus areas were law and the immigration, immigrant student, what they call, I would call them new Americans, but immigrant student rights and the First Amendment rights of students and staff, particularly around social media. And the main conference, two sessions, I attended about four sessions, but the two that stood out most were, one was billed as diversity, just diversifying staff development training, and the board role in testing data, collecting and using testing data. But what I took away from them is they really are infusing those two aspects into strategic planning. So for me, they were really sessions on strategic planning, even though their titles were on something different. But it was very, for me, it was very well, time well spent. And that's why Christine and I missed the community forum, because we had to go up the night early.
I'm not going to talk about these both, because it's too long, but I just wanted to say homecoming was probably one of the largest turnouts we've had in a long time. It took a little while to get everybody in, but the seniors that were helping out did a fantastic job, and it was really nice to just see so many kids attend, and the football game was great, too.
I'll just say it from the conference, and I was there at the law conference, too. I couldn't say for the whole thing. I was there for part of it. But I was actually very impressed by the commissioner, which is an unusual statement to say for, you know, probably the past couple of commissioners, but she has really taken to heart all of the feelings that people have had regarding testing assessments, the new generation standards, and taking time to make sure that everybody understands them, that there's proper professional development for staff to understand what those next-generation standards are, and a slow rollout of, you know, the assessments that'll go along with it. And so, I'm not sure, you know, everybody might agree, I'm not sure how, you know, staff feel about, about her as the new commissioner, but I really feel she's very open-minded and has really listened to everyone who has provided input. Anyone else want to add anything?
Okay. Time for our presentation.
It's a recognition of the, oh, that's after the presentation yet? Okay. Sorry, my side.
Do you want to introduce, or is Heidi going to introduce? How are we going to do? Looking forward to this presentation.
Good evening, and, good evening and welcome to Slingleens. You all met my fifth-grade team last year, who did a presentation last year, and they're back with me this year. Bonnie O'Shea, Lester Beator, Maria Qualter, Kelly Ward, and I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Zhang. Dr. Zhang is the head of the research team at SUNY Albany and the head of the project, and we'll talk about that in just a bit. Dr. Zhang is also a parent in the community. He has a child at the high school, the middle school, and at the elementary school. He still has a second grader. And his daughter Marina is also going to share a little bit about the science program, as well as Gray Chapuiski is here with us also to talk. About three years ago, Dr. Zhang approached me about doing a research project with him, and Jen Gagne and I met with him several years ago. He outlined the project, talked to us about how his project was focused on inquiry learning and using technology to share information. And we talked about which grade level we thought would be the most effective in doing this, and we decided the fifth-grade team would do it, and our fifth-grade teachers were thrilled to be part of this and learned more about this type of education.
Just keep talking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's working.
I think it's the computer. Just plug it in. Just keep talking.
I'm going to lose the power. [laughing]
So, let me turn it over to Bonnie, who's going to, no, Dr. Zhang is going to begin by talking to you about the project and how he got started, and the work that he's done with Gildolan Elementary School as well.
Thank God you have time to share this research work with everyone. I'm Janwi Zhang, currently the Chair of the Educational Theory and Practice Department on SUNY Albany campus. So, let me give you a brief overview. This research funded by National Science Foundation is about using technology to transform how students learn. And on the research side, we have a cross-disciplinary team involving learning scientists about how people learn, and computer scientists looking at how to create technology to help better support student learning. And we have a wonderful group of school partners, including Slingleens, that have been working together for over a year now, and also Gildolan Elementary School, working with us for four years now, and Dr. Jackman Institute of Child Study, which is a lab school in Toronto, a very reform-oriented school that has been working with me for the last 10 years. And we also started a collaboration with the Notre Building Network School in Singapore. So it's a cross-nation team to work together, and, you know, the gap between education research and practice is famously kind of difficult to cross. But, you know, we work together. It has been pretty easy for us to speak each other's language and understand each other's world, and together, we achieved a lot in the last few years. And we are not only adopting the best practice, but really work together to create the best practice, go beyond. In terms of, you know, the education change, in the science education field, there are two important goals highlighted by the new standard, next-generation science standard. One is called deep understanding, to go beyond simple facts, you know, a whole broad range of fact to be memorized. Instead, we need to focus on deep understanding. The second is about authentic practice of science and staff. So we need to help students learn the deep understanding in a way that's authentic to the real world, so that they can know how to build knowledge and solve problems together using the scientific processes. So in line with this two important goals of science education, that's going to connect with other subject areas as well. Our approach in a classroom is called knowledge building. So students work as a collective community of learners to advance their understanding of science together. In this approach, there are three important components I want to highlight. One is student-directed inquiry. So the students not only work on teacher-assigned questions to do some research, but they come up with their own questions, and they do research, and as they find out more, they realize that they have deeper and deeper research they need to be investigating. So sustain on that cycle, that's very essential to authentic science practice, that's, you know, in the scientific labs and R and T sectors. The second piece is about collaboration. The students work together in small groups and also have the whole class, and engage in what we call metacognitive meetings. Stay metacognitive about what they are learning, what ideas they have, and find connections and directions. The third piece is about using technology. The technology is really helping students to put their ideas in the public space, so everyone can learn from each other's idea and respond, in a way to help advance the collective understanding. And we use technology not a form, and also another piece of technology we developed called Ideas Red Mapper, we're testing this year, to go beyond the boundary of classrooms, so the ideas generated by different classrooms can actually flow across the walls and across schools, so they can actually learn from each other across the boundary. So I'm going to turn it over to our wonderful teachers and share the classroom story.
Technology is not my thing. All right. Okay. So, basically, I'm probably going to repeat some of what Dr. Zhang said, but what is our science program? It's really an investigation, and our focus this year has been on ecosystems, which is across grade levels, I think K-6, K-8 even, looking at how living and non-living things interact together to form a healthy ecosystem, but then building on that to find out how human activity can impact that negatively or positively. We're using children's natural curiosity to build upon what they're thinking, so they're, they have their own agendas in a way. It's not teacher-driven, it's child-driven. And when you listen to them during these metacognitive meetings, where they're raising questions and responding to each other in very respectful ways, we have some great video clips to show you, you can see how one child's information will then lead to another child's further knowledge about a topic, or perhaps raise questions or say, "Wait, my research shows something totally different. Could I also add my thinking here?" So that's basically the process of a metacognitive meeting, the big thinking. We've noticed that during these, or this year of research and kind of building on what they do know or what they don't know, is that they're really learning to be spokespeople. They're learning to form opinions, find research to validate those opinions, and if they do disagree with someone, they have to be able to explain why they disagree and give facts or data to support that opinion as well. The other thing is, they've become really great at being an active listener. They can't all talk at once. You have to listen to someone else. You have to respond to them respectfully, which you'll get to see. So I think that in a, in a, in of, that in and of itself has really been very helpful, that children have become very mature as their, as students and learners. We also found that it's a really great way for differentiated learners. They're working on their own topics, so they have a focus point that interests them. It's not a teacher's thing. Today, you're going to learn about clouds. You know, they, they choose their topic. They also work at their own pace with support. They use research materials that fit their skill level. And for those kids who really want to go on, there's no, there's no ceiling, so they can continue to become even more knowledgeable than they were before. I think that's it.
Is that it?
I think so. Would you add anything?
No. I thought it was great. So, we like each other, so, it was wonderful, Bonnie.
Thank you.
So I want to be the first to say that the fact that Bonnie and I were willing to take this on is proof that you can teach an old dog new tricks, and we have been very excited about the opportunity to do this. So you're seeing what is a metacognitive meeting. Dr. Zhang mentioned metacognitive meeting, but I wanted to explain it a little bit more so you get a better understanding of what our expectations are. So first and foremost, we sit in a circle, so we're all facing each other. And I say "we all," and actually, that's an error. I do not face the children. So when we're doing a metacognitive meeting, the children are all facing each other, and my back is to them, copiously taking notes on the computer. So you will see that in the presentation that we have. It's not that I'm not paying attention. I am most definitely paying attention to everything they're saying, but I am taking notes, so later, they have something to refer to. It is minutes of a meeting, if you will. So during this time, they share information that they have learned. They share things that they're wondering about, or they're curious about. When we come to a metacognitive meeting, you are not necessarily the knower of all information. In fact, you're actually looking for your peers to help you hone in on some of the information that you have. It's an opportunity to ask questions, and what you'll notice is, I don't answer the questions. Their peers answer the questions. It's an opportunity to develop and share theories, thoughts about what it is they're learning, and there is subsequently an opportunity to go in and build on the theories of their peers. I have a video, it's a two-minute video, showing one of my metacognitive meetings with Kelly Ward's class from last year. You will notice, hopefully, you will be able to hear it. It's really important to hear what they have to say. You will notice that when they're talking, they have eye contact, they're looking directly at each other, they are respectful in their response, and I will say, this was the one time I decided I would use a couche ball. So you're going to see them throwing a ball back and forth as like a speaking tool, and we kind of played with that idea. We did it a couple of times after that, but I found that it was actually easier not to use anything to go to the next person. What I noticed is they kind of naturally moved to that. It wasn't necessary to have this foreign object being tossed around. So if you will bear with me for a moment, I will click on this. I just want to make sure it's loud enough so you can hear it, and you will see me with my back. I have really groovy socks on, just like I do right now, and that's really all you see is my back and my socks. Oh, and my gray head.
They eat their babies, but even if they're not dead.
Crayfishes can regenerate brain cells, otherwise scientifically known as neurons.
Can I just go back? It's only two minutes.
Because of their blood. They eat their babies, but even if they're not dead.
I discovered on Tuesday while researching that crayfish, crayfishes can regenerate brain cells, otherwise scientifically known as neurons, because of their blood. Their brain has a little, has a little clump in the back that stores neurons that aren't yet born, and as, as they grow, if the crayfish, if neurons escape or suddenly go away, there are always some extra neurons in the back of its brain, drawn by blood.
In my research, I found out that crayfish have teeth in their stomach.
I was wondering if the males would eat the mothers' babies as well?
So, um, there was one question I had for, what's a, what's a neuron?
A neuron? Well, to answer your question, a neuron is a brain cell that allows the brain to work. Without it, you won't be able to live.
I found out that if you put crayfish in a tank with goldfish, if the goldfish went near the crayfish, the crayfish will instantly gobble it off.
So what you're noticing is that our topic last year began very small. It was crayfish, which is the traditional fifth-grade curriculum. After a meeting with Dr. Zhang and his staff, we decided to broaden it a little bit. We still have crayfish in our room, but we are focusing on ecosystems, specifically a pond ecosystem, and we're using the wetlands in the back of our building to go out and investigate. The other thing I want to really make a point of is that some of the children that you just saw speak are extremely quiet students. They don't generally offer a lot during the course of a school day, but their level of comfort during these meetings allows them to really blossom in this kind of an environment.
Can I piggyback from that?
Absolutely.
So by adding a layer this year of a biologist from SUNY to our program, I've found that by this point already, just six weeks into school, the children are so much more sophisticated and mature in their questions and responding to someone else's comment, that within a metacognitive meeting, there could be 10 or 11 different answers going back and forth, or pieces of knowledge based on one child's first comment. So it's, it's really great, and I'm so glad that we have that. So thank you, Dr. Zhang. So thank you, Dr. Jung. So the next piece is the electronic piece, the Knowledge Forum. And I like to think of Knowledge Forum as an electronic metacognitive meeting. When we meet in a group in the classroom, there's so much dialogue going on that sometimes the kids can't remember everything that was spoken, and if I can't type or write fast enough, I'll miss things. But the Knowledge Forum allows them to actually go into their Google Chromebooks, go to Knowledge Forum and post questions, post theories, ask, or just state facts that they know already. But then part of their responsibility is to then read someone else's posting and respond to them. So if someone is asking a question, and you know, Suzie knows the information, or thinks she knows the information, she will add a response to that, and then someone else will add a response to that, or challenge their theory and say, well, I think that a better theory would be. So there's that give and take, and again, it's laying layers of knowledge upon each other, which just makes them that much more sophisticated. At really ten years of age, it's pretty amazing. Within our building, each classroom has its own learning community and has a page on Knowledge Forum, but we're going beyond that. Oh, maybe I should show this. Let me just go one more slide. This is an image of what the, the sort of opening screen looks like, and this is again from last year. We have Mr. Bator, Mrs. Ward, Mrs. O'Shea, and Ms. Qualter. So within each of those rooms, children specific to that room would post their knowledge and their thinking, but we can also go into other classrooms and see what other children are saying. And then in the center, we have what we call the super view, where children can post an even deeper question that they think, as a learning community, we really need to investigate further. And then another layer we're adding this year is that we can do the same kind of sharing with our colleagues and students at Gilderlin Elementary. Even though they are never going to be in the same room together, they'll still be able to share information. And this is a picture of what Knowledge Forum looks like. And of course, when I saw it, I am a traditional teacher, and I'm thinking, I don't know where things are coming from, but Grace Schrapowitsky, who is here tonight and will share with us, this is one of her postings about a theory about global warming. And behind that, there's another comment from another student. But if you look at all those little blue arrows, those are children's responses to each other and building upon each other's work. But as Mr. Bator said, if that sort of freaks you out, like it did me, there is a linear view that we can look at as well. But it's good for the kids to see, because they, and they obviously do it well, better than an old dog, as we say, but they can see how, or which questions or which theories are really gaining attention, and they may be drawn to add more to that.
So just a plug, we could not have done this program without the Chromebooks. The Chromebooks are an incredible asset to our classroom. And I think the best part about the Chromebook is the fact that it's so reliable. It is a piece of equipment, every time students open it, and they use it several times during the course of a day, not just during science, but it is unbelievably, it's just unbelievable that every time I open it, there's never a problem with it. Now, of course, the law will break tomorrow, but as of right now, so we've been using it for three years, and as of right now, they are just very dependable pieces of technology that the kids can open up and work on. And again, we could not have done this program, or a lot of what we're doing right now in the classroom, without the Chromebook, so we thank you for that.
Can I add one more?
Sure.
All right. So earlier, Dr. Jung was talking about how it's an opportunity for realistic work in the science field. So as students, they're not allowed to Google Ask. They can't Google a question, they actually have to look for a specific website that would have that information. So again, I think we're building on their, their knowledge and helping them become ready for that next learning step.
No problem. So it's interesting, because as we started going out to our big backyard, to the place where we were going to meet several times throughout a week, I was thinking about how it would be neat to have a picture of the children in front of something that was going to change, some kind of deciduous tree. So kindly Anna and Leah went out and they scoped out a place for us to take this picture. And I mentioned the word phenology in this slide, because not only will they see how cyclically the environment in that area will change, the leaves will fall off, they'll will have turned orange and different colors. Over the winter, they will be perhaps covered with snow, and then come spring again, there'll be little buds on the trees. But by having them stand in front of it, they're not only going to see the change behind them, but their change. So it was kind of cool, the thought of, we'll be taking a picture once a month, this was our September picture, it was about a hundred degrees out there, I know you can't tell from them, but I was the one sweating in the back. We're going to take one every single month in front of the same place, I'm going to try to get the kids to be in the same place within this configuration as well, just so we can see them change over a ten-month period, as well as what's happening in nature.
So Kelly Ward and I don't teach science, but we did have the privilege of attending the same seminar two summers ago when we were beginning to start this project. And I went for the purpose of figuring out, how can I incorporate some of these same ideas into social studies? We depart to mentalize, so we're social studies and they're science. And I'm going to be really honest, I sat through Dr. Jung's training and I was like, there's no way that twenty-four kids are going to sit in a circle and talk for a half hour about their ideas. And when I saw it happen in social studies, it was amazing to me. So that has become a huge part of our social studies curriculum as well. Very similar to the same things they're doing with science, we focus heavily on the metacognitive meeting, and we base all of our social studies mini-units around a big question. But what I saw happen last year through this process of inquiry and learning in this way is that it never just stopped at that big question, and their thinking went in directions I never would have expected ten and eleven-year-olds to go. So with the language of the metacognitive meeting, it's something that we explicitly teach in the beginning of the year. They learn to say, I agree with Kelly because, I disagree with Lester because, I'd like to build on what Bonnie said. I have a connection to so-and-so. It was amazing to me to hear those things, because what it proved to speak to what Bonnie said is, they're listening. Their listening skills were phenomenal, because they were referencing maybe something someone said five people ago, that they listened to and saw how their thinking changed. Then, I think the coolest carryover for all of us was, we didn't expect this to really impact anything outside of science and social studies, and it did. And our English Language Arts curriculum, following the reading units, we saw students just start to use this language in an everyday classroom conversation or a book group. I would go over to a book group and they'd be like, well, I agree with so-and-so because I like to build on what so-and-so said. And that was just so awesome to see, because they're using these skills that I would argue many adults don't really have mastered yet, like how, how to listen to each other, and it's okay to disagree and have a constructive conversation. So I am going to show you a clip of how this carried over to social studies. Part of the fifth grade social studies curriculum is European Exploration and Slavery. And to kind of branch off into the social studies topic, or slavery topic, I had students get together in small groups and they started making a poster at the beginning of the unit of what is slavery, just to gather their ideas. What is it? And what we found as a class is that on all of their posters, they connected this idea of slavery to freedom, lack thereof. So, we decided, one student said, I asked the class, I go, well, what is freedom? And this unit, which was the coolest thing to see about social studies, took a different direction, and they all started thinking about this for a week, and they're like, well, what is freedom? And how does that connect? And they, we thought about these bigger ideas, and it wasn't somewhere I expected to go, which I think is the most fun thing as the teacher. You can't always plan two weeks in advance, because where is their thinking going to take us? And that, I think, is where the authentic learning comes from. So in the metacognitive meeting clip that I am going to show, you'll see a few things, you'll definitely see the language of they use to connect their thoughts to each other. And why I love watching these videos is because, like Lester, I'm on my computer the whole time, taking notes so that we can look back. When I watch these videos, I really see how well they were listening to each other. They're like all in it, they're staring at each other. They want to connect, as soon as they hear something they have a thought about, their hand shoots up. Throughout this unit two, or this metacognitive meeting, what I thought was cool is they connect to two separate English Language Arts units. In our nonfiction reading unit, one of the complex nonfictions texts we explored was the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And they see them bring that in. And in our book club unit, we read Home of the Brave, and I don't know if you'll see this there, but they brought that into this meeting too. So that cross-subject, like integration of knowledge is pretty cool. And then the last thing to speak to, I think what they said too, is during this meeting, I had, you know, special education students, higher-level thinker students, they all, even in the clips you'll see, each one of those students participate, I don't think you'd ever know. They're, it's this comfortable platform where I think actually teaching, taking the teacher out of it, gives those students a lot of freedom and comfort to speak. Speaking of freedom. So they are, it's the same meeting, two separate little clips I'm going to show you, they're just a minute each, and this meeting was twenty-one minutes, and they didn't want to stop. So that's just to show how their thinking can kind of spread, we're just going to watch a little bit.
So I agree with Zach that there are like also simple parts of freedom, like freedom of speech, and like, you know, to like doing everything that you can do.
I agree with Niall, Zach, and Katie and Noah, but I'm going to add on to Niall, Zach, and Katie, about how there can be different types of freedom. It's not just slavery and not getting paid, it could be like just to choose what you do with your money, or choose what you, what job you have, or what you want to say, or what religion you believe.
There's also, like, there is another type of freedom, like, sometimes it doesn't have to do like with just with that, it could also do with certain types of countries.
And then we're just going to pop over to here. Where are we? I don't know, is it, oh, there we go. You just got to play a bunch of times.
I can just add two things while I'm working on every one.
Perfect.
A couple things that was not doing the science piece in the classroom, the state carryover, and other reasons is that the students definitely don't see the teacher as the giver of knowledge, or the holder of knowledge, because they're very empowered by the inquiry part of the process, they go out and find the information on their own. And they really do become a community of learners, and the teacher's more the facilitator, which is great. And also that they're less focused on right versus wrong in terms of information. We are currently looking at early American groups, and one of them is the Adina mound villagers. And a small group is working on that.
Sorry, thanks. No, keep going.
They some looked at different dates, and it was believed that these mound villagers existed, and they came up with three different sets of dates, and instead of arguing about which set was right, or proof was right, they started to have a conversation about why different sources gave different dates from these early peoples. And they came up with these great ideas about why it happened, and decided to keep them as part of their presentation, and then, you know, discuss the reasons why. Whereas I think in the past, you might have seen a group, especially ten-year-olds, spending more time arguing on which date was right, rather than having this really great conversation about why different dates are out there.
They're really becoming smart consumers of information.
For example, like Tyler raising his hand, that's an example of freedom. Like in some places, you can't even do that. And so I think there's a lot more freedom than everybody.
Um, like Jason and Niall said, they said like, freedom can be very simple, and freedom can just be like walking like out of your house, or it can be like having like, like having the right just to leave where you live. But freedom, freedom is like, it's only like ways of form. It's not, it's not just that one way, that, like, freedom isn't really one thing, it's more like many, like many, it, for them, is like different for every like person, for like what they have and how they can like do it, and that's like kind of what freedom is.
Just a reminder to pass to who hasn't.
So I agree with Niall and Zach and Jason, because they said that freedom is a lot of things. So I, I want to talk, go down to that, because, because we just finished learning about the U D H R, and that, the U D H R stated the human rights, and isn't human rights technically freedom? Because you have the right to do what you want to do, as long as it's above the law. So it.
But as just kind of you see, you, it allows us to follow a curriculum while also allowing students to think so much more deeply, and I think ask big questions and discover bigger themes through subject areas.
Oh, Maria, I don't have my, my glasses on. Okay, thanks. All right. So now we have a couple of young ladies who will share their thinking. Oh, no, I forgot one. Sorry. Yeah, I was thinking it's kind of late. Do you guys want to come?
So, one thing I thought that made it different was like what the teacher said before about how you're not in control of it. Like, you might have to get used to it, because previous years, they would just like tell you, like, give you a full-out layout of like, this is what you need to do, and like, here's all the worksheets or whatever. But last year, you had to work on more by yourself to find out the information. And what I thought that's useful, now that I'm in middle school, I think maybe because there's more homework and work I have to do, and you can't always just like be so independent on your teacher, so that's helpful to yourself when you're stuck on some stuff.
Hi, I'm Grace, and something that I really liked about science last year was being able to do the things that you were interested in and that you wanted to do, because sometimes what the teacher gives you is too challenging or not challenging enough, and being able to choose the right level of learning. And if, like, we did ecosystems, but what I did, I did like a presentation on raising awareness for global warming, and because that's something I care about and I'm really interested in. And that was really good. This year, it's more of a traditional format for science, but I think the best way you could do science was maybe like combining the two, because being able to choose your work, but also having more accessible information, because last year, sometimes it was hard to find. Because last year, sometimes it was hard to find good resources with the information.
Sure.
So at the end of last year, we did interview all the students. And, um, Grace said, "I really didn't care for it, Mrs. O'Shea. I really want a teacher to just tell me." So she grew so much because she could choose her own, um, unit of study, so to speak. And she really raised the bar, not only for herself but for her classmates. So she was great to have. Girls who were fabulous. Thank you.
So just two seconds. The last thing is, um, how do they showcase their information? They do it through something we call a science symposium. It is done two times during the year. Last year was done December and June. This year, we might do January and June. But it's an opportunity for the children to share with their families and other children in the building what they have learned. And they do it typically in the format of a Google slideshow. They also do a project of some kind. And a lot of them wrote papers about their subject. And they had to provide a thesis statement. And then they had to support that thesis through their research. So what we ended up doing was taking our science program and our nonfiction writing program, putting them together and really doing two things at once. So it was a great way of handling all of the things that we need to do during the course of a day.
We could go on and on for probably at least an hour about this. Um, Dr. Zhang, we wanted to share more about the research study. And he put together a packet for all of you to, to, um, to be able to look through to see more details about what the project is all about and what were some of the results that they... What were some of the results that they found just in the first year? At the end of the year, the, um, research students, um, Anna Jo is here with us this year, and she's one of the chief researchers working with Dr. Zhang. Um, she interviewed all of the teachers and then every single child at the end of the year, which is all, all part of their research program. I would say that, um, two, two takeaways from doing, uh, science in this way. Number one, first and foremost, is certainly the student learning. When you look at the metacognitive meetings, at first it looks like, oh, they staged that. Those kids, they, they knew what they were going to say. I've dropped in on meetings throughout the, um, year, throughout the day, and it's absolutely, totally authentic. Uh, it's amazing to hear the kids say, "I respectfully disagree with you." Um, and to be able to build knowledge. I mean, you heard the child talking about neurons. That's not typical fifth-grade, um, science curriculum. Um, but that's what that child chose to research. And it was, it's really quite interesting. And I love the piece about, uh, children of all ability levels able to research and learn based on what they're capable of doing and where they are led to. The other really important, uh, piece about this research project is really the impact that it's had on the teachers. We worked really hard to be able to provide science and social studies in this way. And, um, certainly, Mr. Vitor and Mrs. O'Shea, when they volunteered to take on the science, they had a lot of questions. They're the disseminator of information. That's the traditional way of teaching. And, oh my gosh, now the children are in charge. Um, and that's a big shift in teaching for sure. But it's also something that, that our entire team has embraced fully and has found to be very empowering for them as teachers and for the children. So any questions for any of us?
I, it's not a question, but I just want to say how excited I am by this. Because this is really education of the future. Uh, not only the collaboration among the classrooms within the school, but between different schools and, you know, in different places. Um, and I work for a different division of SUNY. And one of the big issues in research right now is what's called big data. Trying to figure out, you know, within government and research, everybody's got all this data they collect, but nobody knows how to share it. And so trying to figure out how to pool it all together and then be able to share it and then do collaborative research by pooling it together and asking common questions and say, "Okay, well, we found this, but what does your research show?" And you're doing that in microcosm. So you're really getting these students ready, first of all, for college because that's the kind of research they're going to be doing in college. But then when they go into the workforce of the future. So this is great.
Thank you.
I can try. I think it's great because it facilitates conversation with the kids. They don't have enough time with social media to really converse with one another. And it would be interesting to see the impact on our fifth graders going into middle school, sixth and seventh grade. How does that facilitate them in further classroom instruction? Are they more engaged? So that would be interesting to kind of track that, to see if there's an impact on that. And also, um, how do we ensure that every student has an opportunity to talk or is engaged?
We didn't talk about that. That is the expectation. So as the facilitator, as I'm typing or writing, I'll say, "We haven't heard from Jimmy or we haven't heard from Sean. So the next person, would you consider, you know, including them in the conversation?" Or if I know they're very shy and they don't want to speak, I'll do something like Jimmy will be after Susan. And that gives that child a minute to sort of say, "Okay, I have to come up with something."
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I just want to mention, when I'm taking my notes, their name appears. So I type their name and then I take their notes. So I can keep track in front of me who has spoken and who hasn't. And then the couch ball or I will pick the children.
Yeah, I'm not quite willing to release them totally. So I always face the kids.
There was a lot of boys in those classrooms.
Yes, there were.
It was all boys, so. Good for you, Lester, for turning around.
I, I have a comment and then two questions. One is a comment, is it just, um, it's fascinating to watch and it really shows the value that, um, the learning is not from the answers, it's from the questions that we learn to raise. Being a theorist myself, it's, it's not, we're not looking for theory to answer our questions. It is point us in the direction of future questions. So I, I like that from it. Um, is there any plan to move this to, um, other elementary schools? At this point, I realize it's a research study at this point, but are there any plans to do this in a different school?
Sure, I'm going to invite Jen Gagne to come up and, and talk a little bit about this. I'm the principal rep on the Science Cabinet. And we've, I've shared this at our cabinet meetings. And we've, are in the process of inviting other schools to come and visit Lester and Bonnie's classrooms, um, so that they can see what kinds of things that we're doing.
So it was probably about three years ago now that we really got the, um, confirmation that New York State was going to move ahead with, um, the next generation standards, which we call the New York State Science Learning Standards that were adopted in, uh, last December. So a part of those, as they outlined, and part of them is this, um, student-driven type of, um, lessons where there's some type of phenomenon or some type of, uh, question that then gets researched, examined. There could be laboratory experiences with it. And then the students carry their own thinking forward. Um, so knowing they were coming down the line, about three years ago, the Science Cabinet sort of opened up sort of great flexibility to all the elementary schools to go out and try different things. So to try more inquiry, to try engineering kits, um, to try more STEM presentations and look into innovation and inventors and entrepreneurs and really connecting science and, um, technology together. Um, so every school has done some type of exploration into this type, um, of learning. Um, obviously, this is probably the most intense because of the collaboration with the University of Albany. Um, so as we move forward, also in six twelve, we'll see this, you know, come up more and more. Um, and our students will get more experiences as they go through middle school and high school with this. Um, you know, a couple of things that come to mind is, you know, there's four pages of standards that are expected in grade five, and this encapsulates one of them. Um, so it doesn't talk about all, any of the earth and space science that's going to be expected in the new, um, standards in fifth grade. So it, um, not that it couldn't be worked around or that mega, metacognitive meetings couldn't be used in other places. Um, but there's other things we need to consider, you know, also that, you know, could, or, you know, could go to other elementary schools as the new standards get put into place over the next couple of years. Um, you know, it's something we would look to down the line.
And my other question is on, um, the, the slides aren't numbered, but in the piece that you gave us, it said, "Research findings from this project number two. Students supported by our approach developed higher levels of scientific understanding." How do you know that? How, how did you measure that? Was that through testing or through whatever? How do you know that?
That's a great question.
That's all you're just in that, in that part. I know that, you know, it's, uh, we have a lot of data. So typically, the way we analyze, we assess student learning, you know, on the, uh, on two sides. One is how they contribute to the collaboration and the conversation. So that, you know, one slice is look at, you know, do they ask question? What kind of question they ask? Do they make a connection between ideas? And what evidence do they bring when they share idea? So that's like for the contribution of the process kind of evaluation. And we quantify the pattern of contribution, uh, based on their dialogue. That's the, the knowledge outcome side, you know, other than the process, that we look at the, the student-generated work. So we typically use, like, a large, a longer kind of writing task. So explain, you know, how things work. Now, if there's a global warming, so what, how does carbon dioxide have to do with temperature change? So the sphere will write along kind of a text paragraph. Uh, or we, sometime we call it portfolio writing. And in this class, we use call it supernode writing. So it's like that whole paragraph kind of writing. And then we, uh, assess it using a rubric. So the basic level scientific, uh, scientific understanding would mostly, like, say a few facts, but not so connected. And then the second level would be like, uh, not really the fact, but start to really explain how things work, but without much detail. Then third level would be like, uh, you know, putting things in a more coherent format, but maybe have somewhere like a not so accurate and you're missing something. The level four would be like a more, more coherent and complete kind of explanation of how things work in that area. So we call the student or read the student, uh, explanation based on the levels. And then you see that, you know, the different group of students, when they give their explanation, it's, uh, have quite significant difference.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to add again, because you, um, I think Christine mentioned that, but the idea of, of teachers being facilitators rather than the lecturer, so to speak, you know, just, to me, it's, it's just wonderful because I think the students actually gain more from that and probably remember more. I'm sure these students are, um, remembering all that they did last year just on the basis of having gone through the questioning process and decided what they needed to know and sharing that.
Try to let go of that. That's traditional teaching, that the teachers are the disseminator of all of the information. And so it's been a huge learning experience for all of us.
And I think it's great. Great results.
Thank you.
And it's, this was great to listen to this tonight, too. Really impressive. Now, we have, do you want me to do it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or do you want me to do it?
Oh, I can, we both can do it.
Okay, we have some pins, you know, but there are two students here. Certainly want to give. My powerful pins.
Thank you. These are, these are really valuable eagle pins. Now, are there any of the fifth-grade teachers that did not receive an eagle pin last year?
You should give one to the professor. Lynn, give one to the professor.
Dr. Zhang.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. It was a very informative presentation. It was great.
Yes.
It's really easy to do what's, I mean, the first year was scary, but this year is great.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is recognition of visitors who have something, a comment to make on, on an agenda item. Is there anybody who wants to comment on an agenda item? Okay. Seeing no one, move to number eight, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through four. So move.
Second.
Any comments?
Um, I do have a question about the YMCA facilities. Um, is, we have a contract with the, the Y for the high school, for the hockey rink. Um, that's now built into the athletic budget, correct?
Correct. Okay, thank you. I just want, want to make a comment again about Paul Wing and his contributions. Both the resources, he has contributed to different classes in the school district and also, um, being part of the STEM, the STEAM committee and also, um, his time that he has spent in classrooms also. We recognized him last year, and he continues to, um, donate so much. And we really appreciate that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through seven.
So move. Second.
Any comments? Any questions?
Congratulations to Mrs. Herrendine for being appointed, tenure appointment. Yes.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Good motion carries. Okay, number 10, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through three. It was a late addition to the agenda. I just want to point that out.
So move. Second.
Again, any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Number 11, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following, action item one.
So move. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, um, and number 12 is a recognition of visitors who wish to speak on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone in, in the audience that would like to speak to us? When you, when you come up, could you please identify yourself?
My name's Christine Johansson, and I'm a parent of two children in the district. Um, I have notes, but I'm not going to follow them. Um, it's difficult to stand before you tonight. I'd rather not be here. But I do appreciate that we have this forum to discuss issues, concerns that we have. As a parent, I'm asking this board to please consider a policy, not a consistent practice, of allowing for students who've been placed outside of our district through no fault of their own because of the unique needs that they have in order to be educated. I would like to see them be able to participate in field trips. There's rites of passage that occur here in our district that aren't available in the placements that they may have outside of this district. Those opportunities should be included for those students. I ask you to consider this for us, please, and appreciate you taking the time tonight to listen to me.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Daisy Paglia. Um, I'm also a parent in the district. I have a second grader who, like Christine's son, is placed out of the district. I also have a child who will start kindergarten next year. And it's wonderful to come tonight and hear about programs like science with SUNY Albany. But our students, so long as they remain out of the district, they don't have access to any of this. So when something like Nature's Classroom presents itself, where it should be feasible for some, not all, but some students who are placed out of district to attend, I do not understand why there would be a blanket policy or an administrative practice, or you whatever you want to call it, that these students are not entitled to participate. Um, I would also note that the district has promoted that it has a message of inclusiveness for all. And I don't think such a policy or practice is inclusive. Um, again, there's, I'm not saying there should be a guarantee that all students placed out of district can attend. That's not realistic. But on the other hand, um, work could be done to draft a more flexible policy that maximizes inclusiveness for our students who are placed out of district. Um, and I think that if, as a district, we really are committed to inclusiveness, which is a good goal to have, um, you should take a hard look into the experiences of families whose children are placed out of district. And, um, there's a lot more work to be done to promote inclusiveness. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay, moving on to future meetings and events. Next meeting is November 1st. Um, and that'll be at the Normal High School Media Center, um, starting at six, an anticipated executive session with seven o'clock, the regular board meeting beginning. And Wednesday, November 15th, those same times, and we'll be at Elsmere Elementary School. and we'll be at Elsmere Elementary School. Seeing no need to go into executive session, could I please have a motion to adjourn? So move. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Good motion carries. And participation in government students, there are signup sheets up here. And some, so at least sign up on the sheets here. And some of you, I think, have, you need to have one of us sign your sheets also, so you can ask any board member to sign it, if that's what your teacher requires.